All right, moving on, we reached first of two comment sessions for the evening. This first comment session is limited to comments, to items, comments on or questions about items that are on the agenda. It's thirty minutes in total, this comment period. If we don't have enough questions for the last thirty minutes, then we will end it and move on. If you have a question, we ask you to go up to the mic. Each person is limited to speak for three minutes. This allows us to get as many people in as we can. There will be a second comment period later in the evening that is open, also timed, but not limited in terms of what the content is or questions that you can ask about. If you do want to speak, go up to the microphone, give us your name and address so that we have a way of getting in touch with you if we need to. And we ask that if you do get up to the mic to speak, that you do so in a respectful manner. I imagine you are all here because you're trying to avoid the debate that is going on, the presidential debate, and the tone that those debates have taken, so let's model for the rest of the country good behavior. And just one last thing, or two last things. One, address your questions to me, and we do not discuss matters related to individual staff members or any individual students, so. One second. Okay, we're ready.
Good evening, meet at J. Merritt, seven five eight Westway Street. And as it pertains to the agenda, I just had a question with regard to, once the audit becomes available to the public, if the public also has questions, because it's kind of difficult to hear a presentation and not have the information in front of you. So if members of the public have questions with regard to some of the items that were listed, or the potential questions, or if there were any inaccuracies, inefficiencies, or managerial recommendations, who do we report that to? And how would that be addressed? So that, again, the public in total finds out about it?
Steve, targets on you, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you can direct anyone, and this is for anyone in the audience, if you have questions, once the audit, financial statements become released, then you can direct them to our business office.
And will the audit be submitted online? Or do we have to come to the office to get it? How is it going to be publicized that the audit is now available for the public?
Mm-hmm. That's a good plan. Okay. Okay, so it will be posted on the district website.
Okay. Oh, and finally, just the question, I think it's nice that we have that oversight and cost savings and things of that nature, but I was just concerned in hearing that there are checks that are being processed without an invoice, or a proper invoice, or that there are payments, people are, I'm not trying to say they're trying to get over, in a sense, but if someone's making a purchase without having prior approval, that to me signals some type of red flag that needs to be addressed. I don't, you know, it doesn't matter to me whether it's two checks or two hundred checks. Those types of things are a concern to me, and I'm just hoping that we can continue the vigilance so that when we have the gentleman who does the reporting, he can basically say that we're at one hundred percent. That's definitely what taxpayers are looking for when we're putting out two-thirds of our funding, and it's largely going to the schools, and many of us don't have children in the school district. So I just wanted to make a note of that. And I guess that was about, that was about all that I had to say as it pertained to the agenda. Just, I'm glad that we are doing some things, and the school just want to point out quickly, with whatever time I've got left, because who knows? I did bring it up with regard to a school crossing issue that we have, the school crossing guard.
Okay. If you want, I'm going to ask you to come back in the second comment period. We want to try to get as many questions in about the agenda as we can.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm hoping that my question pertains to what was on the agenda. It does have to do with money, but also...
Yeah, we just, can you give us your name and address?
Christina Friend, nine oh two Centennial.
Okay.
I'm hoping my question has to do with what was on the agenda. If it isn't, just you can interrupt me and I can come back the second round. So what it has to do is with money, but more facilities and budget, sort of.
Uh, there is nothing...
Not budget, literally, but money towards something.
Yeah, there's, that's not one of the agenda items, so...
Because I'm looking at the agenda, and the only one that I can think of is treasurer, like the treasurer money audit, or the use of facilities, I don't know where...
Well, the treasurer's report just is the financial report on, on, sort of, the bank balances, and the use of facilities is the request that we get from, from groups to use facilities.
I do want to ask my question, so how should I proceed? Come back later?
Yeah, I think if you come back during the second comment period, you can, you can, there's no, there's no restriction on...
There's no...
No, absolutely not. Thank you.
Good evening, Melissa Watts, fifteen eighty-nine Watts workplace. I might be stretching this a little bit, but since Dr. Cami spoke about all-state kind of agenda, right?
Hmm.
Yep.
No? I don't know. It's a gray area, so I guess we'll, since it was mentioned, we will get the question. Go ahead.
Just in the past, in the past two, three of Walden, prior to probably budget restrictions and stuff, the children who traveled to all-state, there was fees to go, they refused busing, there was a bus. Now the kids kind of travel, you know, their parents get them there, the expense of it all. And it does get costly, each year it goes up. If there's any way that we can get them any money in any, in any capacity, if we could look into that, I know things are still tight, but they do represent Walden, and they are some of our finest, and I think that any little bit would, would help the families that the children are going. And that's good for you.
Okay, thank you.
Lance Williams, eight thirty-two Glanterra Avenue. I had a question about the outdoor education program, if that's okay. Has there been any consideration, since Brookside has such a unique biosphere here, has there been any, has there been any consideration for some of the other elementary schools to come here and partake?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
So what we're doing right now is, the individual schools are really studying the environment around their schools.
Right.
I think that once we grow into this, it certainly could be something that we look at. The issue with that is, now you're adding busing to the cost of doing this kind of work. I'm not saying no, that we won't, but I think there's a lot to study right now within the environment of each of the schools. I think what might be a really interesting idea is to do across the elementary schools, district-wide comparison of the environmental issues. So maybe one of the things that we could do is, after each of the elementary schools does their own studies, to sort of compile something and look across, because then you're really looking at Walden as a community. But it's certainly something that we can consider going into the future. We have a lot right now with what we have, but that could be something we look at going forward.
Sure. I mean, my son goes to Lennox, and I know they're going on a field trip next month, I believe maybe in two or three weeks or whatever. And, you know, obviously, they would have to get here to Brookside, but, you know, like that brook is so unique, you know, there's a ton of stuff there, I'm sure they would study. And I've mentioned this before, and I've been here, I went to high school here, I have a funny story, real fast. When it rained one time, I had to cross the brook, and I tried to leap over it, and that didn't work out. Thank you.
It never does. Thank you, thanks for the suggestion.
My name is Vincent Batford, I live at seven four zero Beach Street. Thank you for the kudos. I am here to talk about those all-state students. It's unusual to send so many children from one high school to the all-state, and again, the expense is pretty great, and I do believe that there was any way, because they are individual students, it's not a team, to help offset the cost of going, because it's really a shame if a student gets a hundred. When a student gets a hundred at all-state, it is not a guarantee that they're going. So that's the first step, and that's many, many years of practice. And to have a student not be able to go because they can't afford it and they're representing the school, I think that should be something considered, maybe not a complete refund, but something of that nature. And something totally different, just, I think it's, this outdoor classroom is great, and to use outdoor classroom and digital microphones in the same presentation, I think is wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert Kugelmas, nine seven nine Bambeeren Street, Walden, New York. Once upon a time, we used to have the audits, the outside audit, on our website under the Business Administration's office.
It will be there.
Pardon?
It will be there. It's not final until we approve it as a board.
And, and, okay, and prior years are there too?
That, I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, well, that's what I'd look for, and that'll save me, and this is how the problem, the trouble of foiling that information. Those audits are very interesting, because despite the fact that you didn't pass your twenty-seven and a half percent tax increase three or four years ago, the seven six six plan, and that you've been hampered by the tax cap, you've been running massive cash surpluses. When I say cash surpluses, we're talking about revenues over expenditures. Last year it was eight and a half million dollars. Despite that, you raised the budget two and a half million dollars more. You just keep racking up the budget, racking up taxes, and stashing away. The, the controller, we're talking about the audit, the controller has reprimanded the Baldwin School District recently, and complains about you overtaxing the Baldwin School District in two thousand and ten. He would reprimand you every year, except for he has a lot of entities that he has to audit. Now, this is all in the record, and I could send you his complaints about the Baldwin School District, and it is true. Now, we also had our auditors up here, the internal auditors. I'm sure they do a very fine job, but they don't audit for nepotism. Now, rumor has it, a recently, a recent administrator put a close relative on the...
Okay, we're not here to talk about bad-mouthed administrators, so please, let's not, and you've been warned about that at almost every board meeting, so let's stop.
But I have asked the board in the past that we get an audit, information about the top administration and about the board members. We've had a lot of turnover of board members, I'm sure it's not a problem. We've had a lot of turnover in administrators, I'm sure it's not a problem, but it's a problem in a lot of school districts. When I was up in Albany, I spoke...
Mr. Kugelmas, that's not related to any of the items on...
Okay, so I'd like an audit on that, and include our buildings and maintenance administrator too, who's been here quite a long time, to find out how many relatives are on the payroll.
Like I said, we're not here to bad-mouth administrators, I'm going to ask you to stop, Mr. Kugelmas.
We have about fifteen administrators who make more than the control of the state of New York.
That's not enough, and I don't want the agenda. Want to come back at the end?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening all, and welcome to our school. I'm a proud Brookside parent, and wonderful to have you all here and to host tonight. And I am so...
Can you just give, I'm sorry, give us your name, please?
Sure, Jamila Green, address two oh five Moore Avenue in Freeport. We've heard so many wonderful things about what's happening, we are experiencing that. Our principal, Mrs. Bumford's presentation is extraordinary. We are continuing in that effort with PTA initiatives, our first field trip is in line with naturalist, a naturalist theme, so we are very proud to see what's happening. And to our superintendent, you are in fact a spark, truly, your enthusiasm is contagious. So it's always a pleasure to see your passion and the joy when you're sharing the successes that are happening on all levels of the district. And one of the things that we were thinking about, and parents have been speaking about it, Brookside, is we were so excited and are excited about the innovatrium. And one thing that we also would like to see how we can also incorporate, in adding spaces for technology, we are also in need of space for things such as music, as well as such as things for art. One of the focuses is on how do we continue to stimulate students and give them the resources to be both creative and inspired. I know you all had a chance to take a tour of Brookside. I don't know, did it stand out, the, those limitations in terms of music and art, and having the space to really nurture those two specific areas?
Okay. We did get a chance to, to tour some of the facilities here. I'll let Dr. Cami speak, she's a little...
So one of the things that we're doing here is, as we do a meeting, if we show our building, not only is the building simple, but have an opportunity to share something amazing that's going on in the school, but we're doing building walkthroughs, we're doing the building. So your question really is multi, multifaceted. One is that we are looking at the space as it exists now, and by that, we're looking at things that, based on our building condition survey, things that are just regular routine repairs that need to be done, upgrades that need to be done, and routine meaning anywhere between now and five years from now. So it's not, you know, cleaning windows, it's replacing windows, for example. So we're looking at that. The other thing that we're doing is, we're looking at the new spaces that were created, and the more important question is, so we're living in buildings that are anywhere from the nineteen fifties through the nineteen...
The thirty?
Thirty?
The steel.
Nineteen... Nineteen sixteen. Nineteen fifteen. Yep. So we have some, some, you know, older buildings, all of our buildings are older. The question really that we're trying to tackle, and that really is community input. So this is, you know, where you, for the, for, for time number one, because I believe there'll be more than one opportunity, but where you get to get on a list of what, as a community member, you would like to see, that, that's an opportunity to do that, and it's, it's paper to chart, you know, pen to, to paper. But we're also looking at, so in the year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, how do you make sure that your buildings reflect learning and teaching as it exists today? Because right now, the buildings reflect learning that is from nineteen hundred, or nineteen twenty, or nineteen fifty. And while some, some of that hasn't changed, a lot of it should change. So when you're looking at outdoor education, we have beautiful property here, and we, we've done a lot with the gardens and things like that, but we, we, as an administration and a board, are really taking the opportunity to kind of vision out, right? So what do our buildings look like now? What repairs and upgrades do we need to make to the building? But what do we want to see in terms of learning? The other thing that we've, that we've done is, and I, I know that I've spoken about this in the past, is that we have engaged one of the BoZs to do a census study for us. And what that's going to do is, it's going to look at enrollment over the next ten years. What that will allow us to do is, it'll allow us, for example, to look at Brookside and say, okay, next year, we know that our enrollment is going to be about X, the year after Y, the year after Z, and that'll help us to really figure out, do we have enough space? And based on that information, and the building condition survey, and the building walkthroughs, and the community input night, we are going to have a larger conversation about facilities in general. One of the things that you see in buildings that are being either redone or rebuilt is that there's more natural lighting, there's more open workspace, there's more collaborative workspace, and if that's what the future looks like for our kids, and that's something I think we all feel pretty strongly that we need to look at in our own schools. So instead of continuing to make construction fit the buildings as they exist, what can we do to our buildings to make sure that they really accommodate the kind of learning that we want to see? It's not a short-term answer. There are things that we have done and will continue to do in the short term, but we're trying to look at short-term, mid-term, and long-term, so that we have a good plan for our building.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Jamila touched upon what I wanted to talk about, so I'm just going to piggyback with what she was talking about, if that's okay? Again, Christina Friend, nine oh two Centennial. So I, I guess I'm looking more for the actionable solution, so I am in one hundred percent agreement with this moving forward with short-term, mid-term, long-term, what does learning look like now as opposed to then, and what we're moving towards. But my issue is that I have a six-year-old, and I don't want this issue to be resolved when he's eighteen. I don't. I, I want my six-year-old to see that actual result in Brookside in the next eighteen to twenty-four months. I want my two-year-old, who will be entering Brookside in three and a half years, to see it as well. So I see what you're saying, and it's a long process, and there's probably a lot of politics involved, totally get it, but what is being done for now in terms of next year? Because Brookside specifically is very small, and even if you look at enrollment, the issue is that, and I'm not reading of Schuber, I'm not, what I'm saying is that the result of Schuber is still impacting Brookside and Lennox because of that. And I don't think there's going to be much of a change. I think that even if we have lower enrollment next year, we still don't have extra space. The library was taken by the innovatrium, which was an amazing thing, but we still can't, we cannot avoid the fact that, yes, technology is where we're moving towards, but what about the love of, of reading and the library? And what about the classic love of art and music, as Jamila was talking about? Those are foundations that need to be enriched in, in our students on a daily, weekly basis. And we can't if we don't have the space. So I guess that was my question. Short-term, what is the actual movement?
So, so there's a few things. The first is, I don't know for sure that Schuber has had the impact that you want, because I don't know if the increase, for example, of, of the first grade this year, I don't know what percentage of those kids moved into the Brookside area and would have been in Brookside anyway, and how many would have been in Schuber. I just don't know that information. What I can tell you is that when we look at that, that census study that we're talking about, will be done before the end of the school year. So we'll be able to have projections in terms of enrollment sometime in this current school year, so we'll know what's happening. In terms of the space, you know, it's a give and take, right? So we were here last year, and we talked about splitting classes and class sizes and things of that nature, and one of the things that we did this year was, we were pretty proactive about looking at those numbers. So one of the reasons why there's a shared space in one particular instance between art and music is because we split classes when we could, and reduced both class sizes. So, so there is a give and take, right? We could have not split the classes and had the room, but we didn't think that was in the best interest of the kids or the school. In terms of short-term, that innovatrium is an example of a short term. The outdoor garden, example of a short term. And we continue to look at that. The library is a shared library. Walden has not had elementary librarians in a long time, I don't know how long. But, you know, we're trying to think innovatively. Worst-case scenario, let's say, let's say we find out worst-case scenario, next year with an additional fifty kids going to Brookside, right? We could add, but we don't want portable classrooms, you know?
I would like to talk about portable classrooms. Because all that you're saying, and I'm sorry to interrupt, all of those are just factors. Even if there are two additional students, twenty, a hundred, either way, the problem will still exist, and that's my issue. The outdoor classroom, amazing, I love that presentation, hands-on, using your community as a resource for learning, that should be done regardless of the space issue. The innovatrium should be a part of a school regardless of a space issue, but what's being taken away from the students is not okay. All of that you're saying are all factors to the problem. And it's not okay, whatever the situation is. And that's my issue. So what is going to be done for the fact that my child cannot go to a classroom for art and spread out and mold clay and, you know, have the painting and just an art environment? I remember Susan Low, my art teacher, so that's my question. And I just don't feel like you're giving a specific answer. So obviously, I can come back to other meetings and re-ask it, but that's a serious concern of mine, and it was last year, and it was this, this year. Parents have sat at a PTA meeting, personal conversation, I just really would like a direct answer. My time is up, clearly. Totally get it. This is just to address it so that it's in it, we're all thinking about it, and we can, and we can come back to it later. One hundred percent. Portable classrooms.
Good evening, I'll keep it short and sweet. Al Dixon, Ten Catlin Avenue, Roosevelt. All right, so real quick, as far as the audit's concerned and the balance sheet, just curious to know what the loan that was out, is on, on the balance sheet, what does that pertain to? It sounds like it's old and it needs to be written off, but just wondering, with the loan, you know, who, who do we loan money to, and is it recoverable at all?
We used to have a program at Walden High School where we offered small loans to students for their college expenses. Those loans were in the neighborhood of a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars, like that. And they signed off on these loans that they needed to repay them. What happened over time is, A, students stopped applying for those loans because they were so small, they really didn't, didn't provide the purpose, they didn't fill the purpose they were designed for. This was a program that was started when a thousand dollars really maybe could take care of a semester, you know, it's, and it got to the point where they weren't useful anymore. And the other problem was, students were not repaying the loans, and we were spending a great deal of time in our business office trying to collect very small amounts of money. Some of these students would pay off of maybe five hundred of the thousand, or whatever. But we ended up carrying these over time, which is why we stopped the...
But we ended up carrying these over time, which is why we stopped the loan program entirely some years ago. So that was the amount that was left. So that debt is in small amounts, a total of $36,000. And they're old, old debts. Those kids are long, and tracing them is not worth the expenditure of effort and time and money that we're putting.
All right, no social security numbers, can't trace, track them down? You know, every, you know, just think, I know $36,000 is, is small, but, you know, I just got my tax bill yesterday, over the weekend, when I came back from out of town. I made money out of town, guess where it's going? Tax bill. It pissed me off. Last year, I think, was a $370 increase. It's a drop in the bucket for me. This year is another $450. When is it going to stop? You know, so 30, you know, I look at $36,000 on the balance sheet, can we recover it? So I don't have to see another increase. I mean, like I said, you know, it's a drop in the bucket for me. I, I made $3,000 this weekend DJing. I have to give it up. I hate giving it up. I really, I think everybody does, you know, hate, you know, giving their money up year after year. We don't see improvements, and, you know, as far as like the facilities are concerned and the growing classrooms. My wife is texting me now, "Did you ask the question yet? Did you ask the question yet?" You know, it was already addressed. Our classroom sizes are increasing, you know, when I got here. I understand, just real quick, you know, just to piggyback again, because it all has to do with money, the balance sheet, loans, recoverable money, you know, our classroom sizes are, when I started here with my daughters, 15 kids to a class. I think now we're averaging 20-something, and it's going to be 30. I could have stayed in Queens.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make that point because I gotta go home and go to sleep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Board of Education approves the personnel actions report dated October 19th, 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Ms. Dreska. This contains the names of individual staff members. We do not discuss this in public. All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, SubCSE 504 Committee, and the Committee on Preschool Special Education in September 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Still moved.
Moved by Ms. Dreska, seconded by Ms. O'Hagan. This contains information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service reports, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Again, this contains information pertaining to individual students. We do not discuss it in public. All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education accepts with thanks a Bach trumpet from the Dostin family, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. I need a second. Seconded by me.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education accepts with thanks Raspberry Pi devices and monitors for the Baldwin Middle School from Alex Pelias, Pelates, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Dreska. Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education awards the Emergency Generator Service and Repair Bid 2016-17, number 1291, to Alternative Power Solutions, the lowest responsible bidder, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments?
No.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the renewal of cyber liability insurance through Arthur J. Gallagher &amp; Company, acting as the district's broker, prorated for eight months, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay. You said first, you hit the buzzer first.
Okay, so can you explain this a little bit? Is the purpose of this for, let's say, hacking, which we're hearing so much about? And is this contract offered out, you know, for bid?
What happens if that broker goes out and solicits?
Steve, can you use the mic, please?
That's why we say we use the broker for it. The broker goes out and solicits for, on our behalf, the best possible prices for the coverage that we needed. So this is the district's liability in case of a hack, of what they would pay in terms of notification costs, actual losses, and I think those are many areas, the costs that we would have associated with it. So it covers the actual loss and associated losses with it.
Thank you.
Ms. Dreska?
On behalf, we have cyber liability insurance.
This is the renewal of the contract. We had, we've had it for...
Was it the first year we had it?
We did it, we've done two short ones to get it up to the end of the school year so that we can do it on an annual basis with our other renewals. This is becoming part of the coverage we get, the standard coverage we get through our general liability insurance, but they're starting out with a very, very low amount of coverage, so we're going to need this to supplement into the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the budget transfers over $10,000 from April 1st, 2016 through June 31st, 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? Nope. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves an agreement with Malloy College for use of the gymnasium auditorium at Schubert Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments?
I do. As the Friday mailing detailed what the, they're Tuesdays and Thursdays, but then there was a Saturday rate given as well. So will they only be, they are on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or are they going to be occasionally there on Saturdays? And if that's the case, then is it kind of subjected to the one-week notice that was detailed in the contract?
They gave us a list of the dates that they're asking for at this point, so...
With the full...
Right, so it's possible that they may want to extend that or change that, and then they have to go through the regular procedure.
Okay.
This is really more to establish the rate.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves a lease with Mail Finance, Neopost, for three Neopost machines located at the high school, middle school, and district office, beginning November 1st, 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? No, it's okay. The Neopost machine? Are these the things that fold up and seal?
The postage.
It's the postage machine.
It's the postage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves an agreement with Regina Enterprise to provide professional development for the period from January 1, 2017, through March 15, 2017, paid from the Auerbach grants, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves a contract with the Judge Rottenberg Center for one student attending a private residential school in the amount of $94,800 for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves a contract with Harmony Heights School for one student attending a private residential school in the amount of $26,712 for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves a contract with Therapy Source to provide related services for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Dreska, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves a contract with Iber Translations, Inc., to provide translation and interpreting services for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? No? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the 2015-16 financial statements, as detailed in the previous Friday mailing. Still moved. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? We had our question period. All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the 2017-18 budget development calendar, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments? I actually did, there was a question that I had, so we're approving the board development Typically, we have a conversation about guidance from the board, or what direction we're taking with the board, the budget development, so...
So those questions really have changed? Questions you want to stay within the tax gap?
Well, I think, I think that's the question that we need to have a conversation about initially, so, because just approving the development calendar in and of itself, I think, is important, but then, I guess the question is, that is the question, I think that the answer is probably obvious, but I think we need to have the conversation that in giving direction to the administration that we would like them to prepare a budget that stays within the tax gap.
You're asking?
We have to have a conversation.
To have a conversation?
Right. We're supposed to really give direction to the administration in terms of developing the budget.
So are you saying we should discuss that, right, this question, or...
I think we should, because they're going to take this budget development calendar and move forward and develop...
Some parameters.
Right, they're going to go, well, they're going to go out to the administration.
Remembering that we don't know what's in the tax gap.
Correct.
Well, I...
So, I mean, I think, right, so, you want to...
No, I was just going to say, I think it's a given, that, I mean, barring...
It's not a given.
Well, no, I think that it's been for the last several years that we have directed the administration to stay within the tax gap. I don't think that that has changed, especially since people are getting their nice little checks in December, correct? So I guess, I guess we can all agree that that's one...
That's why we're having the conversation.
Yeah. So what else do we want to...
Yeah.
Stay within the tax gap, yeah.
Okay. It seems like that is the agreement.
I think that's...
Okay, good, which is what I thought it would be, but I thought we should have the conversation. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves contracts for the approved special education programs based upon strategic evaluation, data collection, analysis, and reporting, that's our one, applications and their corresponding 10, 7, 15 child counts. The per pupil allocation for students placed in a program under Section 619, which is three- to five-year-olds, is $431, and for Section 611, which covers three-year-olds to 21-year-olds, is $1,109. The per pupil allocation for students receiving related services only under Section 619 is $144, and for Section 611 is $371, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan?
Yes.
Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education declares obsolete an adjustable bench in the high, in the high school weight room, which cannot be repaired as per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education declares obsolete musical instruments and accessories at Brookside School, Meadow School, Steele School, and Lennox School, as per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments? Go ahead. There is, there's a process, right? The rules and regulations of the state. I'm not sure what, how that pertains to musical instruments, so Steve, you want to...
It depends on the condition, exact condition of the instrument. Some of them are very, very difficult to condition, so if they're, if they need to repair them, it costs a very bad cost. And otherwise, they're not used to be involved. They're used to be provided by a program, but they're tried, they're sat on, they're brought to work. Those are the reasons that the exit is required.
And any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the facilities for September 2016 through June 2017, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Those who don't know the BEA, that's the acronym used for the Baldwin Educational Assembly. This is a, considered an arm of the Board of Education. It is a committee that does research that we direct them to undertake, and very, very subject, and I'll read through the charges for the coming year. It is open to any member of the community, so if you're interested in joining one of these subcommittees, I guess you can let me know, share your information with the district clerk, and we can direct you as to when that committee is going to have its next meeting. So, having said that, Board of Education approves the BEA charges for the 2016-17 school year as below. The Fiscal Advisory Committee, Charge 1, analyze the results of the exit polls taken over the past several years, identify trends in the data, and present the results of the analysis at a Board of Ed meeting. Determine whether it's worthwhile for the BEA to continue doing exit polling each year. Charge Number 2, review bond referendums of other Long Island districts that surpasses rates and the strategies and methods used by those districts to promote passage of their bond proposals. Include the amount of each bond, the items included, et cetera. How did the successful districts encourage community participation? Who sat on the bond committee? How was membership on the committee determined? And how often did the committee meet? Committee... Civil requirements that have what staffing requirements, first of all, capital, staff time, staff, staff, charge 1, for the first, that's, that's, parent's charge, that's, that's, charge number 2, we check wait, all, structure. May take contact with alumni for the purposes of fundraising, informing about events, et cetera. What can the district send to the district contacting the mass graduates? Any questions or comments? I need a vote. Okay, seconded by...
Okay, so just a brief comment on this. For anybody here tonight, or not here tonight, now, that has concerns about all the things mentioned here, comes to the meetings and expresses your concern, here's where you could really be useful and take part in how we, or decide the information that is given to make decisions. So, you know, by all means, join these committees and take part in doing this research and thus advising the board to move forward in the future.
All right, so any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Matthew Burton? Um, under Bird, Independent Examiner, or Examiner, or... Board of Education, dot com, where the Baldwin District has approved that, have a special form for you, and, 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 that, 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 and, where the district has... Under Bird, and Examiner, or... The main education department, is providing independent evaluators, required, made under Bird, of this, and now therefore being resolved, and Board of Education, right, to ratify this, on four thousand seven thousand... Under Bird, and, 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 evaluating, evaluating, applications, taking, and, 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 hereby ratified, education, or, or, application, by superintendent, and, 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 moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Board of Edu-, yeah, the Board of Education says, if, 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 and, 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 by Mrs. O'Hagan.
That's like that, really weird.
Yeah, there are, 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 all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I mean, anyone who's, who has anything under other... Okay, um, yeah, you have, you have, you have, you have, this, 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 sorry, I covered it up. All right, we'll be open to the second commentary, coming up. Um, Dr. Candy mentioned our meeting, in, in, uh, is next Wednesday, until, until, at eight. Um, I, I guess, BEA, sort of, certified, uh, generally, EA general meeting, or, or, on the calendar for next Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, but we have scheduled that in the conference that's already happened, so, so, um, uh, elected, in time, Sunday, November sixth, to call back, again, uh, uh, schools are closed for students, uh... Uh, schools are closed for students on election day, Tuesday, November eighth, and schools are closed on, um, November eleventh, Friday. All right, um, I'm gonna open the mic now for such a commentary, again, uh, certain areas, uh, time, for, 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 um, comments during session are not, I, from Board of Education, to, 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 um, the exception, again, of, of, members, or, or, to, 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 uh, again, to, 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 again, to, 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 Robert Kugelmas, nine seven nine Van Buren Street.
Now, at the August, uh, board meeting, you mentioned thirty-five million dollar wish list and building improvements. You talked about the community input meeting, and you're trying to, uh, work up a wish list of improvements to our old buildings, because we're an old suburb with old homes and old schools. And, and the BE, you mentioned the BEA, the Budget Advisory Committee, one of their charges is figuring out a way to pass a bond, how, how other school districts have been successful in passing bonds. So, this is the end around the cap. You're trying to raise more tax money, uh, because, uh, because you can't do it with the cap. And the shame of it is, you have all the money in the world to improve these buildings, but you've wasted it. You've wasted it on exorbitant salaries and benefits. We have a principal here, who started at a hundred and...
Mr. Kugelmas, we are not talking about individual members of the staff.
A hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Mr. Kugelmas, we will have you removed if you do not respect the rules that we have set for this meeting. This is not your meeting, this is the meeting of the Board of Education.
You just make up the rules as you go along.
No, we don't. I think I was very clear at the beginning, Mr. Kugelmas.
We're paying our principals at elementary school levels a hundred and eighty thousand. Garden City, which our superintendent is so proud to be on a, uh, on a, on a dais with, they pay their principals on a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. They're, they're, we're not talking about Iowa, we're talking about Nassau County. So, that's money that we could've used for our buildings, and it just goes way up and down the levels for these administrators, who, I mean, you got time off every month, and weeks off every, uh, during the school year, they have five weeks off during the school year, time off during the summer, our administrators, two months off for our teachers. They're not even working a full school year, and you're paying them these exorbitant, and that's money that we could've put into our building. And now you're, you're planning about our old building. We have the money for our building. Go upstate New York, uh, Clifton Park, who you played in the, uh, the, uh, basketball tournament, where they were in the other bracket. Beautiful school, beautiful school, but their superintendent, which runs the school district of nine thousand students, not four thousand students, made, made, in her, in his third year, less than two hundred thousand dollars, okay? That's New York, too. So, you screwed up with the budgets, you screwed up with the, uh, uh, running the school district. People here are complaining about our, uh, our elementary school, uh, classes being crowded. And you got high school classes with age ten, twelve kids. You need to fill up the high school classes, and that would be half the teachers that you need, and that's money saved that we could spend on our building.
Thank you, Mr. Kugelmas, your time is up.
You've blown it with your...
Thank you, Mr. Kugelmas, your time is up.
We pay twenty-six thousand dollars to...
Mr. Kugelmas, I'd ask that you show some respect to the other people in the audience who are online waiting to speak. We have thirty minutes for everyone to speak.
And I, Mr. Press, didn't we, didn't we decide that it's one person per session?
Um, I think, I don't know if I, if I said that, but that is the general intent, is one comment per person per session.
Thank you.
To allow more people, so we can hear from more of the community, thank you.
Well, just putting on, we're not gonna speak again, so...
That's fine.
Oh, okay.
One per, per comment, session.
That's fine.
Uh, good evening, Linda Peters, at twenty-five ten Park Avenue. Um, I just wanna read for a moment the Board of Education priority that was approved on September fourteenth, number four, inspire cultural awareness and sensitivity that builds character and citizenship throughout the Baldwin community. Um, I'm hosting an exchange student to Long Island Lutheran, um, middle and high school...
Okay, well, this is, we, we don't talk about individual student matters in the public forum. This is, this is not the forum for that. But, but I, we have received the request, and we are, uh, we are seeking advice of counsel.
So it is under review?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-one oh eight Grand Avenue, James Cronin. I'm speaking to my, my seventeen-year-old niece, right?
Okay, again, I, this is an individual student, this is not the forum, we don't discuss this.
I was told in the office that I was allowed to speak.
I'm not sure if, who told you that, but that's, we do not, I, I said that at the beginning, we do not talk about individual student matters.
I'm not talking about that right now. I was told there was six board members, and now there's ten?
There's five board members.
Five? I, I'm asking who's who, because I put six letters, including to Dr. Murphy, including to him, that my niece is considering...
Okay, we, again, we, we do not discuss individual students. We, we've, we, we've received your information and your letter, and I believe we've responded.
It was denied, and so, you all need to try again, before they have to sue the school or something.
I, it, we have made our decision, I, I believe the, the next step for you is to appeal to the Commissioner of Education. Okay, we, we, but we don't talk about... We don't talk about individual students in this forum, it's not the forum for that.
And I have two residents, so I pay them the taxes.
I understand that, I can, and I can appreciate your situation, I am, we are all aware of the situation, this is just not the forum for that.
Well, they told me to come speak at this forum.
I, I don't know who they were.
When do I gotta wait, to, what you, eight, nine?
I, I, I think what you were advised to do is, you're, we have made a decision on your matter, the...